Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of School Trustees meeting. We begin this meeting as we do each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have roll call of members.
Julie Hollingsworth, District 1, good evening.
Anne Duff, Member at Large.
Riley Booker, District 4.
Noah Smith, District 3.
And to my left, we have Superintendent Dr. Mark Daniel and Clerk of the Board Angie Philler. And I'm Maria Norman, Member at Large as well. So tonight is the Student Recognition Meeting. And we begin tonight with the State Academic Super Bowl. And I will read that as soon as I get there. Here we are. It is recommended that the Board recognize Memorial Park for placing in the top 10 at the state level Class II in the Academic Super Bowl. The math team placed 9th in the state and the interdisciplinary team placed 5th. This year's Academic Super Bowl theme was "The Age of Exploration." Please come forward as your name is called so we may congratulate you. Mary Daniel. Maya Davis. Jasmine Diaz. Zen Gun Unwardana. I probably butchered that one. Toby Watson. Angie Pachka, Coach, and Mr. Brad Crozier, Principal at Memorial Park. Sorry. Did all the parents get pictures? Parents, parents. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Next up, we have the ISMA All Band, All Orchestra Awards. Julie, have that one.
It's recommended that the Board recognize Memorial Park for receiving the All Music Award at the ISMA All Band and All Orchestra Awards. The All Music Award is the highest honor that a music program can receive from the Indiana State School Music Association. Please come forward as your name is called so that we may congratulate you. Santana Barrera. Jasmine Diaz. Jessica Diaz. Ravino Gabrielle. M. Grimm. Zen Gun Unwardana. Liam Gipson. Braxton Headley. Rodrigo Hernandez Villegas. Olivia Hubart. Ella Moore. Daniel Musser. Noah Palmer. Maggie Ramsey. Rachel Ray. Jameson Reed. Estefania Rivera. Gavin Sirkz. Miles Stockslager. That's Slager? Did I say it right? Gavin Weichel. And Rayanne Whipple. Get a slide up. And we have Colleen Phillips, Band Director. Ryan Thompson, Band Director. And Brad Crozier, Principal.
All right, next up, we have the Superintendent Student Cabinet. Anne?
It is recommended that the Board recognize the senior members of the Superintendent Student Cabinet. The Superintendent Student Cabinet was created to increase communication between the Superintendent and students from all the district's high schools and programs. This group's mission is to provide the Superintendent with the student perspective and empower fellow students to improve the schools and community. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Jordan Green, Northside High School. Morgan McErkin, Northrop High School. Grace Wittegruder, Northrop High School. Langston Level Snyder High School. Justice Billingsley, Southside High School. Karo Lloyd Wayne High School. Mark England Wayne High School. Anaya Eldridge, New Tech at Wayne. Jennifer Lu Amplam. Jada Nicole Beal, Career Academy. Paul Sayhey, Fort Wayne Virtual Academy.
Congratulations. You're welcome. All right. It is recommended that the Board recognize Northrop High School for becoming Indiana's Academic Super Bowl Champions. This is the school's first ever state academic Super Bowl championship. The top 7 teams out of 70 get to compete at state. And winning in 2 rounds is an incredibly hard achievement. Please come forward as your name is called so that we may congratulate you. On the Science Team, who received first place, we have Alexandra Bieber. Noah Hafner. Michaela Lort. And Chris Opper as Coach. Then we have the Social Studies Team, who also received first place. Eloise Beauches. Annalise Ferrarzo Bazaro, sorry. Anthony Kreider. Christian Miller. There's somebody. I'm so glad that you're here. Croy Winters. And Aaron Smith, Coach. Yay. You want to take a Social Studies Team picture? I think this might also be the interdisciplinary team picture too. Oh, tonight is Senior Award Night as well. Yeah. Well, thank you for being here, Christian. Okay. That brings us to Scholastic Arts Awards. Raleigh.
It is recommended that the Board recognize Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship Winners. One minute, no. Nope, sorry. I jumped the gun on that one. Okay, it is recommended that the Board recognize the students that performed in place in the Scholastic Arts Awards. The Scholastic Art in Writing Awards is the nation's longest-running awards for recognizing creative teens. Students are celebrated locally and nationally with awards, exhibitions, publications, and scholarships. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Lauren Anderson, Silver Key. Ryan Voix, Gold Key, Honorable Mention. Olivia Bonner, Silver Key. Alicia Brown. Oh, Elisha Brown, Honorable Mention. Ashley Carroll, Honorable Mention. Hannah Clardy, Two Honorable Mention. Diana Diaz, Honorable Mention. Annalise Bazaro, Four Gold Keys, Three Silver Keys, and Seven Honorable Mention. Samantha Flores, Silver Key. Alex Michael Calvo Gonzalez, Two Honorable Mention and Two Silver Keys. Sarah Hampton, Honorable Mention. Joey Harder, Gold Key, Silver Key, and Three Honorable Mention. Danica, Two, Silver Key. Jay Jensen, Silver Key. Genevieve Collinbeck, Silver Key. Michaela Kleema, Two Honorable Mention. Brooklyn Michaels, Honorable Mention. Kayden Mitchell, Honorable Mention. Samantha Morris, Gold Key. And Paige Nave, Honorable Mention. And there's more. Michael Fury, Honorable Mention. Ava Precourt, Honorable Mention. Sienna Rome's, Gold Key, Silver Key, and Two Honorable Mention. Ella Schmidt, Honorable Mention. Evelyn Serrano, Honorable Mention. Chaya Sirivat, Honorable Mention. Morgan Smith, Two Honorable Mention. Celeste Swing, Two Honorable Mention. Angel Tubbs, Gold Key. Gabriela Villanueva, Gold Key. Maxwell Young, Gold Key, and Two Honorable Mentions. Erica Garcia is a teacher. John Platt is also a teacher. Angela Smolek, teacher, and Scott Mack, Assistant Principal. And that's it.
Scooch in, stagger.
Yeah.
Scooch in.
Find your window. Oh, really? This one? Oh, okay. It is recommended that the Board recognize Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship Winners. 28 FWCS High School seniors were recently awarded scholarships by the FWCS Scholarship Committee. Committee members are selected by FWCS Board Members. Students who receive these scholarships must be FWCS seniors who displayed leadership and initiative during their high school years. Awards range from $500 to $25,000. Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship Committee Chairman Matt Henry will read the names of the scholarships and the recipient names. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Members, Dr. Daniel. Over the past several months, the Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship Committee reviewed nearly 200 scholarship applications from seniors throughout our school system. And so tonight, it's my pleasure to present to the Board our scholarship winners. But before doing so, I'd like to thank our committee members. Nita Auer, Michelle Bander, Judge Bill Lee, who happens to be retiring from the committee. Janaye Johnson and Alfredo Perez. I'd also like to thank Shanita Bolton and Amy Turmolden, who did a lot of behind-the-scenes work to help us. So we're very grateful for all your help for the committee. So this year, 28 Fort Wayne Community Schools High School seniors were awarded scholarships. So it's our recommendation to the Board to recognize the following Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship Winners. For the Bill C. Anthus Scholarship. Timothy Schwanz, Snyder. And parents, if you'd like to take pictures, by all means, step up and do so. All right, out this way. The Charles Baker Scholarship. Kayden Moore, Wayne High School. The Clarence and Josephine Bedenwig Scholarship. Abigail Shin, Snyder High School.
Congratulations.
Nathaniel Pickett, Southside High School. Next, the John and Mary Ann Chapman Scholarship. Mu Blue, Northside. Okay. All right. Naveya Jones, Northside. Alejandra Perez, Northside. And Hady Pierce, Northside.
You can come up, we're not in any rush. Yeah, congratulations.
The Casey Harder Scholarship. Grace Gilli, Southside. The Grace Hogan Scholarship. Amelia Diaz, Wayne.
Mr. Hauser, would you like to be in a photo? Would you like to be in a photo?
Noah Hafner, Northrop. Jatlin Embry, Southside.
Oop, one more picture.
Fiona Gottstoft Stein, Southside.
Congratulations.
The Lee Family Scholarship. Isabella Jarovic Topalovic. Northside. Nurse Marcy Scholarship. E. Indra So, Northrop. Alice McPherson Scholarship. Genesis Villalobos, Northside. The Shana's Shipshandler Scholarship. Giovanna Ibizevic, Northside. Oh, I'm sorry, Northrop. Nathaniel Saul Wittenberg Scholarship. Matthew Hampton, Northrop. The Richard and Patricia Wilson Scholarship. Trevor Robinson, Northside. You can hold just a second. And then Savannah Hatfield, Southside. The John Young Scholarship. Mo Ni Dabi, Wayne. Kailani Johnson, Southside. Theodore Pancake, Southside. Lily Stahl, Wayne. Peter Switzer, Northside. Nora Summers, Wayne. Mu Pe, Southside. Congratulations. And then the Carolyn Zwick Scholarship, Marari Williams, South Side. And this concludes the naming of our 2023 Fort Wayne Community Schools Scholarship nominees. So, thank you.
Matt, before we leave, any sense of how many dollars it represents to these kids? It's all between five and 25,000.
Yes, yes. It's, um, the majority of them are 4,000 dol-, I'm sorry, $6,000, um, or $6,000 scholarships, $1,500 over the course of four years. So, you know, the cost of today's tuition, um, you know, doesn't cover a whole lot, but, but added with other scholarships because obviously these students, I mean, they competed with over 200, um, other applicants. So, um, and we selected 28. We had the funds for 28. Be wonderful to, uh, to increase that, uh, that, that, that pot of, of dollars available. Um, so if anybody knows of anyone who's interested in, in providing money for our scholarships, we would be certainly very receptive. There's endowments and things of that, of that nature, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
It is recommended that the board recognize FWCS Career Academy students for participating in the 2023 Indiana Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA, Leadership Conference in Indianapolis. Forty-two Career Academy students participated in the 2023 Indiana HOSA Leadership Conference, uh, April 10th through the 12th by competing in various skill competitions within their health science field. We have a total of 15 students placed in the top 10 in their competition. We had one state champion and two runners up. Those students finishing in the top three have qualified for nationals in June, uh, this June in, sorry, yep, mhm, they qualified for nationals this June in Dallas, Texas. Please come forward as your name is called so we may recognize you. Cultural and diversity written test, top 10, Tiana Bryant, South Side. Dental Terminology Written Test, first place, Malia Radicki Snyder. Top 10, Kelvin, sorry, Kevin Alvisers Wayne. Top 10, Tessa Borton Snyder. Top 10, Kevin Hernandez, Northrup. Dental Science Skills, top 10, Tessa Borton Snyder. Top 10, Malia Radicki Snyder. Healthy Lifestyles, top 10, Naveya Early, Northside. Interviewing Skills, second place, Andrew Reyna Wayne. Medical Assisting Skills, top 10, Daisy Nino Snyder. Top 10, Lisa Zimmerman, Indiana Connections Career Academy. Medical Terminology Written Test, top 10, Giselle Gutierrez, South Side. Top 10, Nazli Serrano, South Side. Top 10, Sa Fan from Wayne. Personal Care Skills, second place, Chloe Hilli, Northrup. And that is all for the HOSA Awards. Next, we have, uh, the Skills USA Competitions. It is recommended that the board recognize the students that performed and placed in the 2022 Indiana State Skills USA Competitions that were held in Indianapolis. 119 Career Academy students participated in April's conference by competing in various skill competitions within their career and technical education career pathway. The Career Academy had a total of 19 students earning the state title and the opportunity to compete in the National Skills USA Competition in June in Atlanta, Georgia. Please come forward as your name is called so we may congratulate you. Advertising Design, first place, Mu Yay Pei, South Side. In Cabinet Making, first place, Kyle Lundquist, Wayne. Second place, Sidney Reed Concordia. And third place, Noah Sanders Snyder. First, second, and third in cabinet making. Awesome. I need cabinets. Jessie, some people need to see. Early Childhood Education, first place, Anna, is it Gray? Huh? Geez King, sorry, Carol. Yes, yes. Uh, second place in early childhood education, Savannah Hatfield, South Side. Cyber Security, first place, Alan Ramirez Jimenez, South Side. Also, first place in cybersecurity, Corbin Sailor Homeschool. Digital Cinema Production, second place, Evan Ferribi Snyder and Asa Ramsey, Northside. Electrical Construction Wiring, first place, TJ Zelt, Carol. Second place, Jalen Barnfield, Blackhawk. Then we have, Aesthetic, first place, Brenda Bahena, Northside. Interactive Application and Video Game Creation, first place, Aiden Bodie Homeschool. And Brian Guerrero, Northrup. Second place, Bryce Bland, Snyder. And also second place in interactive application and video game creation, Alexis Chris, New Tech at Wayne. Job Skills Demonstration Open, third place, Morgan Di Clemente Ross from Southside High School. Masonry, first place, Brennan Burgett Concordia. Second place, Ian Skinner, Carol. Pin Design, first place, Jada Nugent, New Tech at Wayne. Third place, Aleah Arusko Moore, Southside. Plumbing, first place, Reese Graham, Snyder. Second place in plumbing, Adam Penjelli Homestead. Third place, Michael Mackin Woodland. Promotional Bulletin Board, first place, Aubrey Armstrong, New Tech at Wayne. Also, first place in promotional bulletin board, Genesee Guzman, Janice Guzman, thank you, at New Tech at Wayne. First place promotional bulletin board, Jay Zayner from Snyder High School. Second place promotional bulletin board, A. Nay Day, Southside High School. Jada Nugent, New Tech at Wayne. Mu Yay Pei, Southside High School. You're just racking in them awards tonight. Congratulations. Restaurant Service, second place, Jessica Crockett, Homestead High School. Sheet Metal, first place, Troy Zimmerman, Concordia High School. Second place, Alex Moore, Homestead. T-shirt, first place, need to get, oh, yep, she's here. Mu Yay Pei, Southside High School. You're getting laps in tonight. Second place, A. Nay Day, uh, Southside. Third place, Aubrey Armstrong, New Tech at Wayne. All right. Teamworks Construction, second place, Ethan Brock Bishop Dwanger. Tyler Neff, Homestead. Adam Schnalkel, Bishop Schinkle, sorry, thank you, uh, Bishop Dwanger and Luke Shuck- Shuckle, Bishop Dwanger. Web Design and Development, first place, Chase Truesdale Home, or Homeschool. And Gabe Moore, Blackhawk. Second place, Katie Barnes Leo and Jordan Wolf, New Haven. Third place, My, Myarian, thank you, Johnson, Northside. And Sabrina Dombrowski, Northside. Welding, second place, Chu Lei, uh, Northside. Welding Fabrication, third place, Wyatt Gray, Carol. Grant Holman, Carol. Way to go, Grant. Also, third place in welding fabrication, Marcos Melendez Wayne. And then we have Jessie Webb, CTE Director, and Sandra Adams, Career Academy Principal. Thank you for being here. And that is the end of our awards program. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be next Monday, May 22nd. Um, I guess that leaves us with board member comments.
Good, thank you.
Anybody?
Well, it was, uh, it was great to see so many of our award winners here tonight. We had a reception before the meeting for scholarship, uh, award winners, and it was fun to, um, uh, meet them and their parents and see where they're going to school and see what they're studying. And, um, I found that, that, that's always, I think, one of the most interesting parts of, um, the scholarship awards. The other interesting thing I found tonight was, I don't believe we've had so many students for the Skills USA Awards from other schools because our Career Center Academy, um, I mean, how many schools does it serve? Anybody know? Fifteen, sixteen, something like that, high schools? I mean, I, I, and we've done these awards before. I don't remember so many students coming out from other schools, and, and that was kind of nice to see. Um, so anyways, uh, a fun night. Uh, congratulations to everyone and their parents, and not only that, but, uh, all their, uh, teachers and, uh, principals and counselors and assistant principals back in the buildings, um, who, um, mentor, uh, these students and make them aware of the scholarships and guide them through the scholarship process. So, um, so congrats to everyone. It was a fun night.
I will ditto the congratulations to the, um, scholarship and award recipients, and it was great to have the, um, scholarship reception once again in person.
Yeah, that's right.
That was really nice. That's the first time since, since COVID, so in person is so much better. Um, I wanted to invite everyone to our second in a series of publication, public education updates. updates. This one is entitled, "New Legislation Now What?" It is tomorrow night at the Downtown Library, 6:00 PM in Meeting Room A, and we will have Phil Downs, former superintendent of Southwest Allen County Schools, and he now is at TRINE in their transition to teaching program for their education department. And then Melanie Wright, who is a former legislator at the State House representing south of here, she teaches in Daleville School, so in that area. But, so they will get their perspective on what the legislature has done for public schools, from a former superintendent's perspective and from someone who's been there in the legislature, her perspective as well. So 6:00 PM tomorrow night, hope to see you there.
It could be a depressing night, couldn't it, Ann, when we see what the legislature did for or to us?
Exactly, but we'll see what they have to say. And I also did JA for a day Friday at Washington Elementary, so just wanted to thank those wonderful fifth graders for doing such a great job and for their teacher for making sure they were very respectful, which they were, so Mrs. Steele at Washington. So that was really, really fun.
Thanks, Ann. Raleigh?
I also did JA today at Washington on Friday with Mrs. Speed's class. I'm not going to try to pronounce her name because I'll butcher it, but it was a great class. We had lots of fun, loved visiting. Also, just want to say congratulations to everyone that we recognized tonight, to the students, to the parents, to administrators and teachers and everyone else who supported those kids. I always say congratulations to families because when they achieve like that, it's really a win for everyone who supported them, so congratulations.
I'll just take other congratulations. Over $168,000 awarded according to Mr. Henry. Pretty exciting for the Fort Wayne Community Schools students and families. I will be doing JA today Thursday at Northrup. Catch up with you. That's it.
Dr. Daniel?
So again, this is only a sampling of all the scholarships. So if we think of all the different high schools and our Career Center, I'm sure we're multiple millions of dollars worth of scholarships. Very proud of our students, very proud of the programs we have, and I also want to just say thank you to my student cabinet members. We had a little bit of a pizza party before this, before our meeting, and asking them, so what can we do to improve this? They said, "Have more meetings." So I was like, okay, all right. So they liked having the discussion, and we named a few things that we'd been talking about, and they were so critical in the whole portrait of a graduate process, and they were right there. So again, very appreciative. Thank you, parents, for sending your kids to us. They're great leaders, so.
I had a question, too. Did they have the pizza cut in squares? Wasn't that something with Dr. Robinson, the pizza was cut in squares?
It was not in squares, so I don't know. Maybe it was because of dominance.
Carry on.
We didn't have them in squares.
I asked for it in squares because that way you can have a little pizza. It's not so hard to ask. And it's my fault.
Pizza king.
Pizza king. That's awesome. Yes, it is. No, you're fine. Um, last week I was able to attend the retiree dinner. That's always bittersweet. It's so great to see how dedicated our FWCS staff members are. I think the lowest number of years served was probably 10, all the way up to 46, I think. So we just have dedicated people, and it always warms my heart to know that our staff, we get our staff, they stay with us, and it's my belief that they stay because they just love their building, they love our students, they love their jobs, so they just decide to stay forever, and I enjoy that thoroughly. And congratulations to those retirees. They have deserved that. They deserve to rest and recover. I was also able to go to the 3DE Breakfast. That was really great to see come to fruition. I got to speak with a student from Northside, and they really enjoyed the program. It was really enlightening to hear from a student who spoke about COVID and being isolated, and then her intent was to go to school and just be in her little bubble. And she said she forgot how to communicate with others and have discussions, but the 3DE program really gave her an opportunity to come out of her shell. And so that just made me understand a little bit more the environment that students were in while they were going through COVID. Older students, I guess. My student was in elementary school, so, yeah. And congratulations to all of our families. Like Raleigh said, when our students achieve, our parents, it's my belief that, you know, moms get them there, dads get them there, grandparents, guardians, all those people. So it takes a village. So congratulations to everyone. And I believe that is all.
Will we approve, Madam President? Or move adjourned?
It's like, approve what?
Second, second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.